Good afternoon to everyone here in the auditorium and now in the public. We're happy to have you today. We'll have the road call. Thank you, Madam.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we excuse Commissioners Mark Smith and Lauren White.
Okay, we'll vote. We would have the invocation by Commissioner Melvin McLawhorn.
Director of Father, we've come to thank you for this day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask now that you would come into this meeting and help us to make the decision that we'll be pleased into thee. In the holy name, we pray. Amen.
We will now have our special student come to deliver the Pledge of Allegiance. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Jasmine Cannon, and I'm a senior at DH Conley High School. I'm also in the National Honor Society. I thank y'all for having me this evening. I want y'all to join me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say something else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that-
No, ma'am.
Oh, we're sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Paul Libby's Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the agenda with the exception that we remove under Items for Decision Number Two, Grant Opportunity for Pit Stop.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nolley, second by Commissioner Holman. We're voting. All right. Motion passed, Madam Clerk.
You have no one signed up to speak for public addresses to the board.
Thank you. Thank all of you. We will now have presentation.
And if we'll go down front, Madam Chair, to first present the 2023 Year of the Trail proclamation, followed by Employee of the Month. I could have Alice Keen and James Rhodes come forward.
Alice Keen. You need any assistance?
I think I got it.
Thank you. And Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, so this year, I am thrilled to read a proclamation signed by the chairwoman on the 17th of July 2023 proclaiming 2023 the Year of the Trail in Pitt County. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas Pitt County's natural beauty is critical to its residents' quality of life, health, and economic well-being; and whereas the trails that span across our community are an integral part of the recreational and transportation possibilities of our area and promote an enjoyment of scenic beauty by our residents and our visitors; and whereas the parks, greenways, trails, and natural areas in our community are welcoming to all and provide a common ground for people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds to access our rich and diverse natural, cultural, and historic resources; and whereas Pitt County's natural assets and resources are integral to disaster recovery and resiliency to climate change for future generations; and whereas North Carolina's nature trails vary from a quarter-mile-to-the-mountain-to-the-sea trail that stretches more than 1,000 miles from the mountains to the coast. They range from rugged footpaths on mountain ridges to bikeways along abandoned railway corridors, canoe trails down our state's rivers, to bridle trails in the rolling Piedmont, from trails through state parks to footpaths and greenways through local neighborhoods; and whereas trails offer quality-of-life benefits to all as expressions of local community character and pride, as outdoor workshops for science education, as tools for economic revitalization, as free resources for healthy recreation, as accessible alternatives to transportation; and whereas parks and recreations departments, municipalities, and state agencies across Pitt County have established over 24 trails spanning more than 28 miles; and whereas the North Carolina General Assembly has designated 2023 as the Year of the Trail in North Carolina to promote and celebrate the state's extensive network of trails that showcase our state's beauty, vibrancy, and culture; and whereas North Carolina is known as the Great Trails State. So now therefore, we, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim 2023 as the Year of the Trail in Pitt County and commend its observance to all people, adopted this 17th day of July 2023, signed by Chairwoman Mary Perkins-Williams and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board, and we are so pleased to present this to Alice Keen for her commitment to recreation in our county."
Thank you so much. Are you going to speak? Would you like to say something?
Thank you so much to all of our commissioners for this proclamation. We join our colleagues across the state in proclaiming 2023 the Year of the Trail, and we are so proud of what we've been able to accomplish in Pitt County. And just want you to put October 21st on your calendar now. That day, the Great Trails Coalition will be hosting events in all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina, so Pitt County will most certainly be a part of that. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
And that's my birthday.
Are we going to take a picture?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, James. Next, if Jennifer Stroud would come forward. It is always- Jennifer, you can stand right here on the black tape. It is always a pleasure to recognize our Employee of the Month. So July's Employee of the Month is Jennifer Stroud with the Adult Services Unit of the Department of Social Services. And her nominator selected- nominated her for her determination and compassion as a Community Alternatives Program, that's the CAP program, social worker. And she said, quote, "Jennifer is kind and always has a positive attitude that uplifts others. She successfully managed the duties of two positions for several months. During this time, she oversaw 12 Pitt County facilities, managed 30 clients with various day-to-day needs, and completed the adult foster holiday project during the holiday season while never falling behind in her primary job," says her nominator. She's been with Pitt County government for 17 years, doing exceptional work. She's been a social worker in foster care, foster home licensing, adoptions, an adult home specialist, guardian social worker, guardianship social worker, and transitioned to the CAP social worker position in December of 2022. So this program, as you know, is when peers select peers for exceptional and outstanding service, and it's people like Jennifer who are the heart and hands of this organization and do such great work. So with that, I present you with a certificate of recognition that says Employee of the Month for July 2023, presented to Jennifer Stroud, Social Services, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens we serve, along with a $100 check.
Thank you so much, and you were such a pleasant sign.
Thank you.
You want to? You want to say something?
Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll get a picture.
Good, great. Have a good time. Thank you so much. And you're free to go.
Next up is your department Spotlight for Emergency Management. Mr. Gentry has come forward.
Good evening, Chairwoman Perkins-Williams and Commissioners. So glad to be here to talk about the emergency management. First, I want to mention that we are very fortunate to have the team of professional employees that we have in Emergency Management, EMS 911, and the Fire Marshal's Office, so we're very fortunate that we just have a great team to fulfill our mission that we're required to do. Just a quick overview of what's going on in emergency management. This past winter, we had a retirement of our planner, and we brought on a new person in that role who is not new to us but had been with us as a medic supervisor. So we had somebody in-house that already was somewhat familiar and well-qualified to fill that role, was doing a wonderful job. So we've been updating our EOP, which is our Emergency Operations Plan, our shelter plans, and anything that we would need to lean on during a time of an emergency, making sure everything is up to date and is correct. And we continue to exercise those plans in-house, the tabletop exercises, and we continue to go to training and make sure where we need to be to fulfill the mission. This past year, we received a state grant, a few dollars that we could use to upgrade our operations center, and we've updated our audiovisual equipment in our EOC, and it's really nice. Please stop by and come see us, and we'll be glad to show you all the new equipment. Another thing Emergency Management does for the last three years, and we're planning to, again, once this year, to have our Pitt County Safety Fair. It's a public outreach event where it's like a touch-a-truck-type event out at Alice Keen Park. Have emergency vehicles, fire rescue, EMS for people to come out, and we have other departments that can participate with us to get the message out of whatever's going on in the county. Been very well-attended the last three years. We had to skip a year because of COVID, and we've had anywhere from 400 to 500 people come out. Community Schools has been a fantastic partner with us to help make sure that the word gets out, and we have good participation. And then we take in toys to give to whatever group we identify for that year. Last year was the Ronald McDonald House, and as we get closer to December of this year, we will identify what group we will be assisting this year. During COVID, we were asked quite a bit to help coordinate different type of drive-in events, whether it be vaccinations or whatever. One of the resources that we did not have a lot of was traffic cones. In this past year, through a domestic preparedness grant, we were able to purchase a Mert trailer, and that's what's in that picture there. So we, I'm not hoping for any more pandemics, but we do have the necessary equipment to manage those type of drive-in events much better moving forward, and that's a piece of equipment that we can, you know, assist other agencies within the county in any kind of traffic-related incident or event they would have that required to direct traffic to move about safely. Moving on to our Fire Marshal section in Emergency Management, our Fire Marshal spends a lot of time, you know, doing all the fire inspections required throughout the county and other municipalities that have the county perform that service, but one of the other things that we're proud of is anybody that needs a smoke detector that's not able to purchase one, or their local volunteer fire department doesn't have one, or they don't participate in the program. Once we are notified of that, the Fire Marshal will go out and make sure that it's properly installed and documented, so that's a great service. So this past year, we did 111, but our volunteer fire departments, most all of them participate in the same similar program, and they're out putting them out also, but we just wanted to make sure that if there was a gap anywhere or somebody not available, we wanted to make sure we were able to supply that. Another one of the duties that the Fire Marshal keeps up with is the special assets that we have, we obtained through the years through the state and the federal government, whether it be a message, signed message board, light tower, or any other type of equipment. They coordinate that to make sure that our community partners, municipalities, or fire departments have access to that, and then he also coordinates with other state and federal agencies in any kind of work we would do, whether it be hazardous material, air quality, or any kind of coordination through the state Fire Marshal's office. He handles that. And then we were, we always had two positions in the Fire Marshal section, but for years we had part-time people, but a year ago, in last year's budget, we brought on a full-time person, so we have two people that can do the fire inspections, and it's working out really well. Moving on to our EMS section, y'all have assisted us in continuing to upgrade our fleet. We're still waiting on some of that equipment to come in, but it is ordered and being processed, but it's really helped us to be able to freshen our fleet. I want to continue to talk about our Chicade Peak Time Ambulance we put in service last September. It's like I've said two or three times previous, it's doing or working as designed. It's taking the pressure off the busier squads in that southern corridor, heavily populated, doing a really nice job there. In the Pitt County schools, I can't say enough about their cooperation in allowing us to be there. Just as a, you know, fun fact, we had over 12,000 EMS calls that the county EMS and contracted squads responded to out in the county across over the last year, so they're staying busy. Just another note, Dr. Robert Patella, Roberto Patella, has been our medical director for years, and he has moved into a different position at ECU. So our new EMS medical director is Dr. Brian Kitch. He's also been with that office for several years now, so he's not a new person to us, but he is new in the role of being our medical director, and we're really excited about what he can bring to the table to help us continue to move in the right direction. Community paramedic. You saw fit in our budget that we just went through, the budget season, that you added another position starting in January, and thank you for that. Community paramedic program. I tell the manager all the time that we could use 10, but I'm very appreciative for the one addition, and the one we've had for several years has done an awesome job. But basically, you know, the community paramedic program is there to assist individuals that are identified that need some assistance in figuring out what they can do to help reduce maybe some of their trips to the ER. And through that, the community paramedic will go out and assess what's going on and make the proper connections through community partners to assist them in helping them have a healthier lifestyle or have a better medical situation. We also have a part-time person that assists her that goes out and does home inspections, addressing life safety issues around the house, making sure that if they need grab rails or making sure their home is safe, making sure they have fire, smoke detectors, just anything they can do to assist them to lessen their dependency on calling EMS to go to the ER. Right now, we're trying to manage eight people at a time. It's like a, up to a six-month program. Some people get off earlier, some stay the whole six months, but we always have a waiting list, and there's always someone there waiting for our assistance, and in January, when we bring on that second person, that'll help that situation tremendously. Quickly, this is just a snapshot of what community paramedic does for our system. This is a person that comes on to the program, and they call 911 all the time or a lot of times. It's just showing that it reduces about half the number of calls and the cost of an individual once they get connected to proper resources and they have a better quality of life. So it's a really good program, and it's beneficial to all that go through the program. 911, they're a busy bunch, and we have a good team, and I've been really thankful that even though you see in the news on occasion that other centers are having problems with staffing, we have the occasional vacancy, but we have done really well the last three or four years in keeping that ring staff with trained, professional people, so I'm really pleased with that. But 135,000 calls last year, telephone calls, which resulted in a little over 38,000 dispatch for service, and that could be multiple units, but anyhow, they do stay busy in there. We completed our CAD-to-CAD project last year with Wilson County. In the event our center is busy and we can't answer the phone in a timely manner, it automatically rolls over to Wilson County. They take the call, and now with this CAD-to-CAD project, instead of having to call us back on the radio or the telephone to tell us, hey, somebody just called, it will work through our computer system, and the information is there because Wilson County has already inputted that information, and it comes back to us, and we're notified. So it's just a more seamless process than depending on the radio, so that was a good move on getting the, and that was done through a grant, so we identified some state dollars, 911 dollars to take care of that. We're doing some duplication of our CAD servers to make sure that if it's down, we have a backup plan that keeps on moving seamlessly. And one of the things I'm most excited about is our 911 center is now accredited. Now, I had to say that halfway because we've gone through the entire process, we've passed, they've given us the verbal okay, but the accreditation, National Academy of Emergency Medical Dispatch, I've had some computer issues, and until that is cleared up on their end, they can't send us the actual certificate, but they've told us that we have met the requirements for accreditation, so I'm very proud of that. Jimmy Hodges and his crew has done a fantastic job. And that's my spotlight. If you don't have any questions.
Any questions for our EMS director? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Great report.
We, what?
Say, great report.
Oh. We now have Mr. Hill, the man with the dollars and cents.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Perkins-Williams, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. After July 1st, 2023, and before being charged with taxes to collect for fiscal year 2022, I'm sorry, for fiscal year 2023, 2024, the tax collector is required to give a sworn statement to the Board of Commissioners as to the annual settlement of taxes in accordance to the North Carolina general statutes. A list of the unpaid accounts is available for public inspection at the tax collector's office and the clerk's office. It's my recommendation that the Board approve the annual settlement of annual taxes for fiscal year 2223 as presented.
I say move.
Second.
Who made the motion? Commissioner Ward, and second by Commissioner Nolley. Let's vote, please. What happened?
It's unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous. I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
Motion passed.
Mr. Hill, you on again?
Yes, ma'am. For my second report tonight, I bring to you the June 23, 2023 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 99.39%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 99.42%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. It's my recommendation that the Board approve the June 2023 collection report as presented.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
I want you to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner- McLawhorn, second by Commissioner Nolley. Let's vote, please. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. We now have a report from Ms. Kelly Dixon.
Kelly Dixon is your Deputy Finance Officer who's filling in in Sam's absence this evening.
Doesn't he look good?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board and Manager. Tonight, I'm here to present the June 23 financial report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and the EMS Fund. At this point, we have completed 12 months of fiscal year 23, or 100% of fiscal year 23. Within the General Fund, we have collected 93.2% of the anticipated revenues and spent 90.4% of the expenditures. In Solid Waste Fund, we have collected 106% of revenues and spent 96.8% of the budgeted funds. And then lastly, in the EMS Fund, we have collected 94.5% of the anticipated revenues and spent 93.7% of the budgeted funds. With that stated, if there's no questions, my recommendation is to motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote, please. Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Managers' report.
Yes, I have a few items for you this evening. Your next meeting dates are August 7th and August 21st at 6:00 PM in this room. Wanted to make an announcement of our employee service awards. You may recall, we do these a little differently now, so that all employees can come during their work hours. So tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, all Commissioners are invited to join the employees who will be recognized for their service to Pitt County government. And if you'll allow, Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to just call out the names-
Oh, please.
-so they may hear their names on television for their service to Pitt County. Those serving Pitt County for five years are Brandon Bates with the Detention Center, Tanisha Bazemore with Social Services, Amy Benson with the Register of Deeds, Charles Blackman Detention, William Creach Detention, Michelle Etheridge, Emergency Management, that community paramedic program, Ryan Gibson, your interim county attorney, Matt Gibson in Legal, Christopher Imes in Social Services, Daniel Enman in Detention, Brittany Riddick, Public Health, and Trina Williams in Veteran Services. Serving 10 years with Pitt County government, Daniel Bissett in Emergency Management, Joseph Collins in Detention, Venus Curry in the Sheriff's Office, Lauren Dale with Cooperative Extension, James Evans, Emergency Management, Jason George, MIS, Jessica Hardy, Public Health, Dennis Hines, Detention, Stephen Morgan, Sheriff's Office, Walter Strickland, Detention, and Adam Wainwright in the Sheriff's Office. For 15 years, we'll recognize Karen Bennett in Detention, Kimberly Hardy in Public Health, Russell Hill in Tax Administration, Marsha Perkins in the Sheriff's Office, Priscilla Pitt in Social Services, and Shemitrus Ridley in Social Services. With 20 years of service, we recognize Williams Beeman in Social Services, Courtney Cullifer in the Detention Center, Phyllis Neal, Social Services, and Alfred Waldo in the Sheriff's Office. With 25 years of service, we celebrate Lisa Arnold in the Sheriff's Office, Amanda Hoffner in MIS, Charles Mitchell in the Sheriff's Office, Michelle Moore in Social Services, and Celia Williams in Public Health. And then we have three who will re-recognize for 30 years of service tomorrow morning: Philip Averitt in Social Services, Janet Bunch in Public Health, and Cynthia Ross in Social Services. And those employees that have an asterisk on your list, Lauren Dale, Kimberly Hardy, and Cynthia Ross are all now retired.
We appreciate their longevity to the service of Pitt County.
We sure do, thank you. Your next item, July 21 to 24th, which is this Thursday to the following Tuesday, is your NACO Annual Conference in Travis County, Texas. Five Commissioners and I will be traveling for the educational opportunities that are presented, and Commissioner McLawhorn will be your voting delegate at that event.
Thank you, Commissioner McLawhorn.
Item E is the Golden Leaf Grant Award that I wanted to make you aware of, and this is a great news item as a partnership between the county and the town of Aden in securing this grant. So Pitt County applied for and was awarded a Golden Leaf Site Development Grant in the amount of $1.5 million, which is the maximum amount that that grant awards for an Aden rail site. The program is aimed at sites that have completed the due diligence necessary to demonstrate that the site is suitable for development, and the funding will be used to upgrade a water line that will not only serve that rail site, but any new development in the Aden industrial area, including expansion at the Minji's Bottling Group's new building, which is currently under construction, the CMI Plastics expansion, which is- which is currently under construction, the CMI Plastics expansion, which is also underway, and improvements in Worthington Industrial Park. The Aden Rail Site, just so you'll know about that particular site, which was the catalyst for us to receive this grant, is comprised of about 400 acres under option by the town of Aden, and it has previously been awarded $500,000 by the North Carolina Railroad Group to develop a pad-ready site for recruitment of businesses that are interested in rail service. Remember, Pitt County provided the match for that grant, which is what got all of this started. Rail sites are in very high demand right now for industrial projects, and the development of this site is crucial to our ability as a county and region to compete for projects that prefer or require rail, as this is now the only site in Pitt County that is near-shovel-ready and rail-served. Work will begin immediately on this waterline project, which should be completed by the end of the year. A wonderful example of collaboration between the county and one of its municipalities to improve and enhance infrastructure for the good of the entire community through economic development. Any questions on that?
Great news.
Yes, and then the next great news is item F, and the last thing I have to report on, which is the North Carolina Department of Infrastructure Technology, Information Technology, Great Grant Award. So you all may recall that we received the first Great Grant Award with Bright Speed, and Great Grants are the awards that allow us to place high-speed fiber optic network cable into the ground, allow a private provider to do that, in partnership with the state and a financial contribution from the county. So months ago, we advised you that Bright Speed was awarded a grant for Pitt County, and later you executed that agreement, the tri-party agreement, and that's moving forward. There were still Great Grant Funds available, because not all 100 counties applied for Great Grant Funds, and after that first round of funding, they had available funds remaining, so they took a round two. Pitt County stepped up to the plate, and we partnered with those that we knew who were interested in round-two funding. And then on July 6th, we received notification on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Information Technology's Division of Digital and Broadband Equity that Spectrum Southeast LLC was selected for funding under the Great Grant Program in the amount of 1,60,000 dollars, 1,60,186 dollars and 30 cents awarded under American Rescue Plan Act State Fiscal Recovery Funds for the installation of high-speed broadband network in Pitt County that will serve 270 additional households that were not addressed in the first round of Great Grant Funding. So we are thrilled that this was awarded. Pitt County's contribution under this grant is only $5,000.
Wow. Thank you.
To... So the state will contribute over a million. The match in your notification letter is 187,091 dollars and 70 cents, and that will be paid for by Spectrum Southeast LLC minus the $5,000, which would be our contribution. So a wonderful partnership to continue to install high-quality fiber network in our community for those areas that are unserved.
Are we pretty much finished with that, or do we have a lot more to go?
We're not really finished. So the mapping that allows us to get Great Grant Funds for unserved households may or may not totally reflect those who are... It does not reflect those who are underserved, and some say it might not even reflect all who are unserved. So with the Bright Speed Grant and the Spectrum Grant, I think we have made significant progress towards those that have been determined by the FCC to be unserved. But there are phases beyond that that will provide additional funding through what they call the CAB Grant, and then after that, the BEAT Grant, which are additional programs to help serve those that are not being captured in these two. So I think the answer to your question is we're not finished yet, but we've made significant progress on those identified by the FCC as unserved.
Yes, and I wanted that pointed out because this has been a while coming, getting to the point that you are reporting right now.
Yes, and importantly, I ought to recognize Mike Taylor, your Deputy Manager and Chief Information Officer, who has been instrumental in all of these conversations and agreements and keeping me informed. And he probably could have stood up here and said it a whole lot more eloquently, but the fact that I can reiterate it that way is a testament to the way Mike has kept on top of all of this and kept me informed in these processes. And so, extra thanks to Mike Taylor in MIS for his work in securing these...
I just hope...
Working with the private providers to secure the grants.
I just hope one day we'll have all of the residents with internet services, good internet services.
That's the goal. That's all I have for my manager's report.
All right. We need a motion for...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McLawhorn to approve the consent of generous second by Commissioner... None. Let's vote. We now have items for discussion. Mr. Hill, you're up again.
Tonight, I bring to the Commissioners for your consideration of resolution to survey the Pitt-Balfour County line. The reason we're requesting, I'm requesting that the Commissioners tonight take that in consideration. The assessor, I've been in communication with the assessor in Balfour County, and we both agree that the line is in certain areas throughout our border. We also anticipate growth between Pitt and Balfour County. Currently, there's no cost to the county to have this resurveyed, and the waitlist is estimated at about two years. So if the county decides to do it a year from now, from what I've heard over the last five years, it's been about a two-year waitlist, so we want to go ahead and secure our spot in line to have the line surveyed. Here's an example of what we're looking at. This is Highway 33 East and Grimes Farm Road. The solid black line is the Pitt County line that we have currently drawn on our GIS, and that red line is the Balfour County line, the way they have drawn on their GIS. As you can see, there's a gap in between those two. And so as individuals purchase land in that area, we have to work together between the two counties to try to figure out how much acreage is in that general area. That's about a 90-foot gap at the northern side of the county, and it's at an angle, so it goes down about 45 feet, and that's just using that information there. Here's another example. This is Boyd's Road, still have that gap running along through that area. And then here is where South Grimsland Bridge Road and Dixon Road. As you can see, there's overlap in that area. The solid black line is still the county's line, Pitt County's line, and the red line is the way Balfour County currently has that area mapped. So these are some of the areas, and if you go north, you kind of see the same thing as well, a gap and overlaps throughout that area. We're requesting to our boards to have that line surveyed so we can make sure exactly where that line is.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a... In the past, I received a question about some of the area in Griffin. Is there possibly that this can be included? Because they couldn't tell about the town of Griffin.
Is that going to be where Lenore County is?
Yeah.
So that would have to be the... We could, I could have talked to the Lenore County Tax Administrator, their board would have to go into that agreement as well.
There was some question between the manager and one of the Commissioners and myself as to where the lines for the city and the county was.
Oh, between the city and the county?
The city and the county, I believe, as well.
The county and the county, Mike.
It, Lenore, yes.
Lenore County.
I think that would be outside the scope of this request, but certainly something we could look into and bring back to you.
No, because they didn't know. And I'm sorry, I didn't mention it before, were they... I was informed about that.
And tonight, the proposed resolution is to resurvey the county boundary common with Balfour County and Pitt County. Appoint myself as the County Special Commissioner on Boundaries, request that the county line be surveyed by the North Carolina Geodetic Survey, County Boundary Survey. And for this to happen, both counties have to be in agreement to have the line surveyed. So just the timeline. July 10th, the Balfour County Assessor presented a resolution to resurvey the Pitt-Balfour County line, and they actually approved that, and I think I've given you all a copy of that resolution that the Balfour County Commissioners did sign. If our board agrees with it, August 1st, we'll try, both myself and the Balfour County Assessor will submit the resolutions to the North Carolina Geodetic Survey, requesting the survey. That will go ahead and secure our spot in the place. And then, to be determined, like I said earlier, there's about a two-year wait to resurvey that, the line.
Okay.
And my recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing the resurvey in the Pitt-Balfour County line.
Motion, please.
Madam Chair, second.
Commissioner Tom Coulson.
So will this resolve it forevermore?
Yes, sir. So what that is, is just redefining exactly where that line is, and there is no cost to the county.
Will it resolve it forevermore?
Yes.
How did we get to this? I don't like having 90-foot gap in surveying.
So I think what really happened is throughout time, as the maps were on paper, each county had their own records. And as North Carolina has gone to the NC-1 map, you can start seeing where the overlaps and gaps are in between the counties, what they were mapping. That's a state-run program, and it just takes the county's information and says, here it is for everyone to see, and they don't try to rectify or clear up any boundaries. They leave that to the counties to decide. But yes, sir, that should...
Resolve.
Resolve that line.
Okay, any more questions? Now we're ready for the motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Huggins, seconded by Commissioner... None. We're voting.
Look, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Ward...
Can you correct me? Thank you.
So just made a mistake in pushing the wrong number.
Passed unanimously.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
The resolution on our place, at our place, for each Commissioner. Number three. Mr....
Timmerman.
Oh.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Here before you to talk a little bit about recycling. Real quickly, ECVC has been processing our co-mingle since 1995. Back in February 6th, ECVC made a presentation to this board and shared the financial challenges that they've been facing in recycling operations. At that time, the Board directed staff to issue an RFP and bring back a recommendation on these options, and that's what I'm here for tonight. ECVC did not submit a response and is not interested in continuing the recycling services as one of their lines of business. On March 10th, Pitt County sent out an RFP for recycling services and received four proposals in response. Sunoco Waste Management, Pratt, all provided bids to haul recyclables out of the county and process them at their current facilities. Sunoco's in Raleigh, Waste Management's in the airport, and Pratt is in Fayetteville. So if we were to go with one of those, we would have to pay a processing fee plus transportation costs. In that proposal, we asked if any of the companies would be interested in taking over the MRF that ECVC operated and update it and continue to operate a materials recovery facility in Pitt County. There was a company, RDS, provided a proposal that they would bid, they would ask to work with ECVC to purchase the current recycling facility, upgrade the facility, and keep it here in Pitt County. Just a little more background, ECVC is willing to continue to process our materials until August 1st, 2023 of this year. After August 1st, ECVC and I have discussed, and they're willing to bail our recyclables so we can continue to recycle, and then the recyclables will be hauled to RDS's facility in Portsmouth, Virginia for approximately six months while they complete the upgrades to the recycling facility. There will be approximately six to eight employees needed to provide the bailing operation. RDS and ECVC are in negotiations. For RDS, once they take over, the closing of the purchase of that property are willing to hire these employees as RDS employees and keep them employed there. After reviewing all the options through the RFP process, it is recommended that RCS proposal is the best option for Pitt County, the region, businesses, and industrial community for providing recyclables and co-mingle of cardboard and other materials. If we were to ship the material out, private industry would have to do something with their cardboard, and that would cause problems, and there's about 6,000 to 7,000 tons of cardboard recycled here in Pitt County annually. So it is our recommendation, staff recommendation, to enter into a contract with RDS to accept and process Pitt County's recycling materials. The contract price is $132 per ton, and then there would be a blended value percentage rebate of up to 70% of the monthly revenue for Pitt County, which would just lower that $132 per ton. So what we're asking for tonight is we want, our recommendation is to authorize the county manager to terminate the contract with ECVC by mutual consent effective August 1st, 2023, and then execute the necessary documents to revert property back to ECVC and enter to a short-term contract with ECVC for bailing. And also, we ask that you accept the bid from RDS and authorize the county manager to execute a contract with RDS to accept our recycled materials from Pitt County.
Jason Thomas from ECVC is present. We've been in continuous conversation throughout this process, so just wanted you to know that he is here as well.
Are there any questions from the members of the Board?
Madam Chair, serving on the Board of ECVC for a number of years, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal as presented.
Okay. Did anyone have a question? All right. We accept the motion...
Second.
...made by Commissioner McLawhorn, seconded by Commissioner Huggins. Let's vote. Sounds like a great arrangement to me.
I think it'll be a very good arrangement.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda?
Yes, so I'll be standing in for Tim Corley this evening. He is out this week, and Ken Bran is available to assist as needed for any questions you may have on this. This last item is a request for a budget amendment, and it stems from, and I think it will create a win-win situation for both an improvement of the traffic pattern for safety at Wintergreen Primary and Intermediate School, at the same time helping us to move forward with our recreation plan at the Alice Keane Park so that we can have a driveway permit in the place that we would really like it to be. So by way of background, if anybody has been on County Home Road at morning drop-off time or afternoon pickup time, you realize that it creates a lot of traffic congestion because folks are lined up along that road for pickup and drop-off. By contrast, if you go by Hope Middle School, where they have a different traffic pattern configuration with multiple lanes within it, you don't see that sort of backup on the main roadway because there's enough sufficient space to be within the school property to get it done. The Board of Education had plans some time ago of what that would look...
The Board of Education had plans some time ago of what that would look like to make those similar type of improvements at the Wintergreen School and alleviate that traffic flow, but they just hadn't done it. Other projects had higher priority in getting done. At the same time, Pitt County, as you know, has been working with the plans to develop twin recreation centers, north of the river and south of the river, at Alice Keane Park and the northern part of the county in order to enhance recreation and community center access within the county. And as part of the plan at the Alice Keane Park, there was a proposed driveway that came out as a second access point into that park area that would serve the new gymnasium and provide some wraparound traffic flow that would be safe for the park. That would, in order for that plan to be approved by DOT and to be successful, we really have to remedy the traffic issues that are occurring at Wintergreen School. That have been long overdue for some time. And so, in working collaboratively with NC DOT, with the Planning Department, with the Engineering Department, with Dr. Linker and his Facility Services folks, we realized that it will cost about $500,000 about to remedy that traffic problem at Wintergreen School. In looking for available sources of funds, the county maintains its fund balance, and within its fund balance, there are restricted funds that are for educational purposes only, that come from sales tax, that can only be used for these types of things. That fund is very healthy. And so, it's my recommendation to this board that we do a budget amendment to utilize those funds to enhance and improve the driveway situation at Wintergreen School, and the schools would take the lead in bidding that work and getting it done, and they would begin work on that as soon as possible. If we approve that, that will allow NC DOT to approve the driveway plan where we want it to be for the Alice Keane Park improvements, at the same time, knowing that that's happening. And then we have a win for the schools, we have a win for the park, and we have a significant win for the community who won't have to be backed up on County Home Road and experience those safety issues morning and afternoon. If the board is in agreement with that funding allocation, so these are not funds that can be used for anything other than education. They are also not funds that were included in your fiscal year '24 budget because we didn't have this issue before us at the time we were doing that planning. So this would not be an allocation that increases the base budget of the schools. It would be a one-time funding allocation to take care of this particular driveway project so that we can move forward with those safety improvements and our park improvements.
Any questions or clarifications?
I just, could you just tell us just quickly what the plan is? Because I was the principal out there when that school opened, and it was, it's been a problem since the beginning of time. So, the only way we solved it was driving through the parking lot where the teachers and the parents park, you know, like this, and then get up to the sidewalk and unload the kids and go out at the other end, and it took forever. But, the school has increased. That took, that got the cars off the highway back then, but because they've increased in enrollment and they have the other school right there decided, they're just, there's, something has to be done.
So page 91 in your packet shows the plan of how that road would have multiple lanes that goes around their existing school property.
So those lines are lanes, cars will be?
In those lanes, yes. And if I'm not mistaken, and Ken will correct me if I'm wrong, it's not going to be dissimilar from how Hope Middle School operates.
Okay.
Madam Chair, a move that we accept?
A second. Motion by Commissioner Natalie, that we make the recommendations that our manager has shared with us, and it was seconded by Commissioner Ward. Let's vote. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Well, it seems as if we are down to our last item on the agenda. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Kathy Fraser to the Pitt County College Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner McLahorn?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to make appointment of Tom Kokoski for the board. I think Ms. Fraser has served her time very diligently, and she did a very good job, but in view of her serving that time, I think we need to move on to another person, who was the name of Tom Kokoski.
Commissioner Colson.
Given the fact that we have two commissioners that are absent tonight, and this is an extremely important board, could we put off until mid-August, when all commissioners expected to be at the meeting? I know you're going to be missing the next one, as I understand it. And so, that way we'll have all nine to be able to vote on this, instead of it.
Anyone objects to the recommendation of Commissioner Colson?
No.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Great.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Then we will hold this recommendation until our last meeting in August.
If Commissioner Colson could make that in the form of a motion to postpone consideration until August 21st.
Motion to postpone. Let's vote. Yes, we agree with Commissioner Colson. Yes, we agree with Commissioner.
So let it be said, then, I never.
He had, he has a smile on his face. We are now down to item number 11. Commissioner Ward?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Natalie?
One comment. We have the Little League Softball World Series coming to our community, so I just encourage everyone to come out and support those young athletes.
Thank you. Commissioner McLahorn?
No comment.
Commissioner Huggins?
I do have a comment. It's not a comment, it's a concern that I want to bring up, and it's not, it probably, it most likely does not fall on our purview, but I just want to bring it to your attention, and that is the grocery store baskets. I spoke to Councilwoman Monica Daniels about this, asked her if she could mention it at the City Council, and maybe something can be done. But they've become an eyesore, as well as it could be a safety problem, concern, because you see these grocery store baskets all along the streets. On Stantonburg, near First Citizen Bank, on Hookah Road, you'll see them, several of them. And I have seen children pushing these grocery store baskets in the streets.
As toys.
As toys, yes. So it could really become dangerous. So I just want to, I don't know that, as I said, I think it's probably a city problem would fall on the depth of purview, but I just want to bring it to our attention. We represent the city. Some of our, I mean, our residents, our districts fall within the city limits. So, just want to bring that to our attention. It is, it's a sore, eyesore, as well as a safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No comment.
No comments, Commissioner Colson?
Nick Harbin.
Thank you, I have no comments as well. Enjoy the rest of your evening, board members. May I have that grand motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, made by Commissioner Huggins, seconded by Commissioner McLahorn. We will adjourn by response.